Welcome, I am called to order the April 19, 2018 Business Meeting and ask the County Administrator, Don Krupp, to please take the role.
Well, good morning Commissioners, it looks like it's a wonderful spring day outside. I would suggest we peel back the roof and let the sunshine in.
Good with that.
We have Mr. Jeff Muns here representing County Council this morning, and of course, we have Mary Rathke serving as your clerk to the board. I'll start with a roll with Commissioner Humberson. Here. Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Chair Bernard. Here. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
(Inaudible) to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Don, what do we have on the agenda this morning?
Well, so the first item we have on the agenda are a couple of presentations. The first, it's about National County Government Month, and we're going to be looking at a video on serving the underserved. I'm going to ask Mr. Todd Logan to, from our Public and Government Affairs Office, to talk about what we're doing this morning. Go right ahead, Todd.
Good morning Commissioners, happy National County Government Month. I'm Todd Logan with Public and Government Affairs. National County Government Month is held each April. Since 1991, the National Association of Counties has encouraged counties to promote the services and programs they offer. This year's theme is serving the underserved. All month, Public and Government Affairs have been relaying via social media some of the ways the county is serving the underserved and breaking poverty cycles. Some of the highlights recently shared or scheduled for later this month include county health centers serving 17,454 individuals. All are served regardless of the ability to pay. Over $3 million in energy assistance was distributed to nearly 5,000 households. The Veterans Service Office, working with over 1,700 veterans, filed 854 initial claims. Staff assisted, denied claimants with 155 appeals and reopened requests, and helped 76 veterans apply for VA healthcare. The Volunteer Connection Program assists seniors and people with disabilities and residents lacking resources and are in need. And just a great, and just this week, we had a great volunteer fair on Tuesday. Last year, transportation-reaching people, drivers logged 266,000 miles and provided 10,000-plus medical-related trips. And the Senior Companion Program provided 22,000 hours of service supporting our seniors. A county program that the Board is directly involved with, the Small Grants Program, assists local organizations whose purpose is to help the most vulnerable residents. This program, which distributes $250,000 annually, helps people meet basic needs. We've created a number of video highlighting, videos highlighting the county's efforts to serve the underserved. Garrett Teague, our Video Production Coordinator, has put together a short montage that I'd like to show you. Mary?
Great.
I love my job because I love serving our underserved community. My job is a different job every day. And then I love the staff, just working with them. They're great here. We, here at Sunny Side Clinic, we keep an open mind about things. We don't force care on people. We like to, you know, talk about their concerns, about their fears, and then come up with a plan. That works for both of us, especially for them.
The PTA clothes closet, people donate clothes to us. We sort it and pull out anything that is stained or holy and get rid of it. And we keep the nice clothes. We wash them, we hang them, and then we have a store that people who are in need of clothes come in and they can shop for free and get clothes for their children. We serve children preschool through high school. We gave out clothes last year about 700 times to children. My co-partner, Dina, applied for a grant. It was kind of a new experience for us. We've never done that before. They awarded us $2,500. Kind of gives me goosebumps. It was, we were very surprised and very excited because it was new washer and new racks. Wow, it's awesome for us. I know we just, the little things make us happy.
So Father's Heart is a day center, Tuesday through Friday, 8:30 to 3:00 p.m. And we are here to help people get through to the next day, those that are experiencing homelessness. So we received a shower grant from the county. That grant helped us to extend our shower program. So before that grant, we were able to do about 25 showers, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. And we were not offering any showers on Thursdays. Right now, until the grant runs out, we are running showers, about 30 showers, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday each day. So we're thrilled about that.
Well, the benefits of having a shower is so that people can go out and look for work, feel good about themselves. Some people, you know, feel real bad about themselves when they're not clean. So, you know, this is an opportunity for them to get cleaned up and get some good food and go out and look for work and try and find housing.
After months of trying to find a dentist that would help, subject finally reached out to the Clackamas County Health Centers. Having served 14 years in the Navy, he has veterans' health benefits at the VA hospital, but not dental coverage.
And they said, "No, we can't help you with the dental." So I was, they were so bad, they were getting infected. I was in the emergency room quite a bit, like I was in three times within two weeks. They said, "We can pull them for you, but that's all we will do for you." They pulled them nine months ago. And I've been calling different dentists. When I was younger, I had money, and I never had a credit card. Everything I bought, I paid cash, so I had no credit history. So I couldn't get a dentist to work with me. And I finally sent an email here to the clinic, they said, "Well, we'll talk about..." And I wasn't expecting them to pay for everything. I said, "I can make payments." They said, "You're a veteran, we want to thank you for your help." And that's about it. And they did everything else that the VA wouldn't do.
Clackamas County is committed to assisting our local veterans. That's why our Commissioners recently gave the Clackamas Community College Small Business Development Center, SBDC, a $10,000 grant to provide veterans with scholarships to receive SBDC services. The SBDC offers resources designed to help entrepreneurs and small businesses start, grow, and thrive. The Center also offers one-on-one business counseling.
Each of the videos highlighted in the montage is available in full on our YouTube channel, youtube.com/ClackamasCounty, and we are sharing all of those throughout the month. So if you have any questions, I can try to answer.
Questions or comments?
Just want to thank you for including that part about the SBDC grant. Appreciate that.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Don, okay. So our second presentation this morning is for the CLACCO 2017 Video Awards. We have Garrett Teague here from Public and Government Affairs to present this to you.
Thank you, Mr. Krupp. Thank you for having me here today. As you said, I'm Garrett Teague with Public and Government Affairs. I'm the Video Production Coordinator, so I'm responsible for video programming on CLACCO TV, formerly known as the Clackamas County Government Channel. We rebranded recently for a few reasons. One, we wanted to highlight the diverse videos that we do create. As you saw in that montage, we do a little bit of everything, from public meetings like this, to Senate district appointments, to videos about small grants and other things. We also wanted to highlight the multiple platforms that our videos are, videos are on. We're much more than just our cable channel now. We are on YouTube, Facebook, Twitter. Our videos are sent out via email marketing, and they're embedded on our website. Third thing that we wanted to do is, I'm sorry, I'm getting mixed up. So the third thing, the reason we wanted to do is to be more in line with our branding, our new branding for communications products in Clackamas County. So the CLACCO Academy, which you attended last night, or the CLACCO Quarterly that gets sent out, this is just another version of that. But no matter what we're called, we're still going to produce award-winning content. Last year, we were happy that we earned five national awards, and this year, we've already been nominated for a Best of the Northwest Award for Overall Programming Excellence. And a video series that we've done with Water Environment Services called Meet the Experts has been nominated for a Regional Emmy. So we're really excited about that. I have a brief video promoting the new brand and highlighting some of the videos we create.
CLACCO TV is your source for Clackamas County news and information. We're telling the stories of our communities. Exploring unique locations. Learning about our rich history. And meeting the hard-working people and businesses that keep our area moving. We're making government more accessible and providing vital information about county services. We started with just our cable channel in 1996. And we've grown with the times. The world is mobile, and so are our videos. Stream our channel online 24 hours a day. Catch up on classics and watch new videos on demand. We're connecting with you on the channels you're using. We are Clackamas County. We are CLACCO TV.
That's great.
That's great, branding, yeah.
Thank you. And I couldn't leave here without thanking all the staff that make this happen and put up with us to make some of these videos, and for the producers that are out there shooting the interviews and getting the footage and editing these packages and making them look great. And thank you again for having me here today.
Thank you. Appreciate your time. Great work. All right, anything else?
I think it ought to be noted that, because a lot of people may not be aware of this, this is not paid for out of your tax dollars. This is actually paid for by franchise fees. So we're not just putting on television programs with your tax dollars. We actually use those tax dollars for more important things. But good job on PGA's part.
Great, thank you. Well, next up is Citizen Communication and Linda Malone and Les Poole. I'm doing them in order that came in. Linda, former mayor of Sandy, welcome. It's been a while.
Thank you. I should get here more frequently, but now that I'm retired with four grandchildren, it has fallen down the list of priorities. But I come to you today with something I find to be of utmost importance. I've recently been paying attention on the national level, much to my dismay, at all of the environmental rollbacks that there have been nationally, starting with, I think, putting coal water back into streams and some other things that are real scary and from a citizen's standpoint, pretty frustrating, because there's really nothing that, as a citizen, you can do other than march, which I have. And, you know, all of our congressmen and senators, except for one that doesn't represent me, are on the right page. They're trying to stop this, but they're in the minority. So I tried to look at something that can be done locally, and one of the things that came, you know, in front of me was the fact that the Association of Oregon Resource Lands, the AOCC, is looking to do some of the same things that our representatives nationally are doing, which is reversing gains that were made in the last administration to protect environmentally sensitive areas, such as the Cascade-Siscus National Area, which was, is about the only one that was created to protect biodiversity. But it has something bad going for it under the current leadership in the White House, which is it has Obama's name on it. And I'm really afraid that it's going to get rolled back. And where that affects us locally here is our county pays tens of thousands of dollars, and I understand the dues to the AOCC have already been paid for this year, but I don't want my tax dollars, as Ken said, tax dollars don't go to this, to CLACCO. They shouldn't be going to the AOCC either, because it's funding lawsuits to try and reverse the expansion of the Cascade-Siscus. It's funding lawsuits to try and make it easier for them to log. And the part that Obama added wasn't even in the ONC, you know, forest harvest area. It was in a reserve area. So to try and reverse it back even further than when it was added. But what we can do locally, I would love to have us, if we can't do it this year because we've already paid our dues, I would at least like us to be vocal in our membership at AOC, saying that we do not support lawsuits against the government. We do not support rolling back protections for the Cascade-Siscus, and that we're members because we've already paid our dues, but next year, we will be following CLATCEP and Multnomah County and withdrawing our membership. Because right now, those tens of thirty, tens of thousands of dollars that we pay are funding those lawsuits, are funding that lobbying that's trying to roll back protections for parts of Oregon. And as a grandmother, I want the, I'm sorry, my time's up, but I'm going to say, as a grandmother, I want those areas to protect, be protected. As a former elected official, I look at what's happening in DC, and I wonder at where the spines have gone and why they aren't sticking up or standing up against things that they see that are wrong. If they don't see they're wrong, then they need to go. I want to look at my local officials, which are my local officials that can do something about it, the five of you, to stand up for what Oregon stands for, for most of the country. They look to Oregon as being progressive environmentally, to be in a beautiful place that likes to preserve its beauty, and I want us to do that. So, thank you.
All right. Appreciate it. Martha?
Well, Linda, it's so good to see you again, and you've got two grandchildren on me, so.
Oh, you only have two?
Yeah, I only have two. You've got two more than I do, but I do want to respond. We do go to the ONC meetings, I go when I can. One of the reasons we maintain our membership is so we do have that voice at the table, because we have a balanced view as a county. If we withdraw, then we lose any opportunity at all to influence any of these issues and outcomes, so it's very important. And there is a distinction between the ONC lands, you know, the ONC counties, and the AOC. The AOC is the Association of Oregon Counties, which is all 36 counties in the state. ONC essentially is 18 counties that basically have had this land under their auspice, pretty much. And somewhere in here, wanted to tell you about the acreage, actually, that Clackamas County has. We're one of 18 counties. Our total acreage, ONC acreage, is about 95,000. We're the sixth-most acreage of 18 counties. 75,000 of that is managed by the BLM, and the United States Forest Service manages 19,000 acres of that. So it's under the auspice of the BLM and the Forest Service on how they manage that land and how they manage timber sales. But there's some misinformation out there that concerns me, and I don't know where it's coming from, but I'm here to tell you that we're not using tax dollars at all to the ONC counties for, for, for membership. You know, the lawsuit basically comes from revenue generated by the ONC lands. And the revenue generated from the ONC lands supplements counties with funding specifically because they can't generate tax revenue from those lands, because it's public lands. So really, this notion that your tax dollars are actually going to fund this is not accurate.
The money from ONC lands that you receive, if you didn't spend it for dues, you would still get it and be able to use it for other things in the county.
I, I understand that, but then there is a, there is a fairness and equity issue with, I believe, these other counties that we need to be at the table if we're going to actually accept that money. Because this is also, I'll be very honest with you, and I've said this to folks before, and I see some, I suspect there's some folks from Oregon Wild in the audience today. Round your heads. One of the drivers of this, from a social justice issue, is the fact that a lot of these counties are slipping into extreme poverty. They have no money for their schools, they have no money for transportation. Some of those areas have kind of now become the Wild West, where they can't even actually supply appropriate public safety issues because of this particular issue and the restrictions. And my attitude is that to withdraw would be absolutely unhelpful for all of us in order to understand what those particular counties are going through, because poor people are poor people, whether they're in Portland, whether they're in Sandy, whether in Clackamas, but they count in Harney, they count in all those other counties as well. So I can't help solve the dilemma if we withdraw from the counties. It would actually be, in my mind, very wrong-headed and would really damage long-term relationships that we have tried to build up to influence this process. With all due respect to Oregon Wild, I don't know their board members. I've never spoken to them. This just kind of popped up out of the blue suddenly after Multnomah County kind of, you know, withdrew, which frankly, I think was kind of a heartless act because of the poverty that these counties are dealing with. And it is disturbing to me personally, as someone who depends on relationships through the years that you build up, to try and understand where other people are coming from, that suddenly we have folks that, I've never had coffee with these folks, I've never talked with, I don't know who they are. They seem to be a lot of, they seem to spend a lot of time in the outdoors, which we all do, but I cannot personally, as someone involved in this issue, trying to help solve it, kind of throw away the personal relationships I've built with these other counties, for folks that I don't, I don't know from Adam. And I am also extremely worried about this notion of the fact that somehow these folks are anti-monument. That really isn't the case. What they're upset about is this, they were ignored when the monument was expanded in the last days of the Obama administration. And now, this is an emotional piece. They felt that they weren't heard, they felt that they weren't listened to, they felt that they were totally discarded. And the expansion includes over 40, well, 40,400 acres of ONC lands. Now, the federal government lawyers have said this, "They could not be legally included in a national monument because of a solicitor opinion issued by the Department of the Interior in 1940 forbidding ONC timberlands from inclusion in any monument designated under the Antiquities Act." So the lawsuit is actually trying to get, is revisiting that case law. So that's really what's going on. They want the case law revisited. If there had been more conversation and inclusion, and if there had been discussions about a land swap, you know, so they could have some additional acres managed by the BLM and, you know, the federal forest folks, then we wouldn't be having this lawsuit today. So that's the clarity that they're trying to get at. And I know that because I've been at the table. And I'm really worried because I see some of the hyperbole, this kind of stuff that's out there, and I'm like, I just don't think it's, as a friend, and someone who's known you for a long time, and as a biologist who has an environmental degree from Cornell University of Illinois, I certainly am not against anything that you talked about, but I'm very concerned about what I see as individuals kind of rolling in, who we don't know, who don't understand the social justice issues of what we're working with, the other counties, and really trying to put our county in a position where we're going to not have those kinds of relationships to influence process. I don't really think those folks seem to particularly care about Clackamas County one bit.
Well, just to respond to you a little bit, Martha?
Sure.
You, your characterization of Oregon Wild is rolling in. I worked with Oregon Wild under a different name back when we were protecting our watershed, and I went to Washington DC and testified before...
What was the, what was the name?
ONRC, I think, before they were...
Oregon Natural Resources Council.
Yeah. And I went back to DC and testified on Wyden's bill, the Wilderness Bill. So they aren't rolling in, they've been around for a long time, looking to protect our, our areas. And if the way to solve the financial problems of those other 15 counties that are going broke because they can't log enough is to come in and log our, our national forests, then I think we have to find a different solution. You know, to make them sustainable on the backs of destroying our environment, to me, is not the way to go. And if there's other ways that they can be enriched through offsets from the federal government or from the state of Oregon, I would prefer that to destroying forests that have taken, you know, millennia to grow and to go in there and, and, and the land, the 45 acres that you talked about, those were reserve lands. They weren't loggable lands anyway. I mean, they were in reserve. So I'm just saying, the characterization that Oregon Wild is not in serving the best interests of the citizens by protecting the environment, I think, is unfair. And I think there have to be other solutions than logging to solving the financial woes of the counties east of the mountain.
I understand that, and what I meant by what I said was, these individuals, I'm glad that you evidently have a personal relationship.
Well, with some of the ones from the past, yeah.
They really, I really do. I have an issue with people who have never really reached out recently in any way, shape, or form, and I've been back a number of years, to have any relationship or speaking with us, only when it comes to suddenly going into other counties and trying to peel them off. I just have an issue with that, Linda. I just don't agree with it. I'm as environmental as anybody else, as I said, I'm a biologist. I understand ecology, evolution, and systematics. It's what I studied. And I understand the diversity of the forest, and I do believe that there are ways we can have harvest sustainably. But if we are not at that table, we cannot talk about that, we cannot influence that, we cannot work together collaboratively with our other counties to change the paradigm of how we manage things sustainably. Removing ourselves from the table is not the answer to this. And I'd be more than willing to have a cup of coffee with some of the board members if they choose to have a conversation and relationship, but I don't particularly want to sit with some well-meaning young folk who are lobbyists, you know. I want, if that board has an issue, they need to, they need to step up to the plate on a personal level. They need to listen to what, what I'm trying to do in a way to help solve this problem so everybody gets what they need and want. Because it's not about not logging, it's about sustainable logging, it's about good management, it's about forest fire prevention.
As a biologist, you know that the Ciscus, Cascade-Siscus, is the, one of the only ones that was designated because of its biodiversity.
Absolutely.
Which, anyway.
So, this might be a more appropriate offline...
Yes, but...
Okay. Now, we could, we could, we could discuss the biodiversity piece. That, that isn't, that wasn't, that's not the issue. The issue is how it was managed and how people were treated and how they were contacted, and notions of other ways of doing a land swap in appropriate areas that would be more conducive to sustainable techniques. But we'll, I'll talk with you off.
I hope our... I hope our involvement on that board is, is pushing for the sustainment of that monument.
Linda, if I'm not there, it won't happen, I'm just telling you that. I mean, really, truly, and it's not because I'm the greatest thing since sliced bread because I don't have that big an ego, God knows, but, but if our county doesn't help frame that discussion in a positive way with these folks, and if we are put in a position where they are feeling as if we're slapping them in the face, it will not only hurt the O N C counties, it'll actually hurt the whole association of counties, it's kind of like the League of Cities. And that's the issue we're dealing with.
We need to get together.
Okay. We'll have a cup of coffee sooner than later, my friend. Thank you.
My response is, we will be discussing this when we go to paying the dues. It is about twenty-seven thousand dollars a year. We don't, as far as I know, get much money at all, certainly, I don't think we get that much money. And it is a discussion that we'll have when the dues are due. We are not involved in the lawsuit, we're just members of the group, and that's important to note, too. Neither was Multnomah County. Matter of fact, nobody is on that, well, I'm sure somebody on that list is, but somebody had to do it. Anyway, Ken.
Can I, can I just, can I just have one more thing? I'm sorry, I know I didn't want to turn this into a huge discussion, but by God, I have the microphone. So, so, it's mine, it's all mine. No, the other thing that I worried about, look, is this with the Clatsop County piece. I know that they voted, but I have one friend, Commissioner Leanne Thompson, she voted no largely because what she's been working on is the cross-laminated timber piece, because she thinks it's a way to not only, you know, harvest sustainably, but then like move into a green wood products environment for a supply chain which, which will really reduce the carbon footprint. So I worry that like, things like that get mischaracterized, too. Because I know her really well, and she's a good person. And I worry that she hadn't been listened to in that either, so, anyway. Well, okay, offline, we'll talk.
I look to you to do the right thing, to all five of you.
Thanks for coming.
Okay.
Ken.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My staff has reached out to Oregon Wild after, Commissioner Fisher and I have to go to Washington DC next week, so after that, we expect to be having a meeting in the offices about some of these issues. Commissioner Schrader will be attending those meetings, staff will try to coordinate our schedules to make sure that that happens. So that is actually already in the works.
I appreciate that.
So we'll, we will have those discussions, and hopefully, hopefully we can figure out ways that we work together on this. The worst thing that can happen, frankly, is, is we end up doing this. This is, this is not going to make it work for anybody.
They do that fine back there.
Yeah, they do.
We don't need to do that.
Yeah, this is why we have to go back there, unfortunately. So that meeting will occur.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you. Les.
Good morning. I'll try to keep it to three minutes. Did you get your three minutes' worth?
I got more than my three minutes' worth.
Get your three minutes' worth here, we fought hard for that to happen, and it does happen here.
Les, why be different? Why be different?
Yeah. I did want to just reference something that we heard early in the presentation, and that is, the earlier presentation about the government channel, which now has a new name, it's been rebranded, they do a really good job. It's a very well-run department, and they even make me look acceptable on camera. I'm sure they do a lot of photoshopping and touching up, but in all sincerity, the outreach and what they do is, is well worth the cost, and kudos to them. A couple of quick things. One is, last week, myself, and then at the end of the meeting, Commissioner Savas talked about the congestion tolling plan that's out there. And I would encourage the commission to, to reiterate to Metro and to ODOT that a scenario where we're going to be told or charged a fee to use existing infrastructure, and, and not much would be done to improve or increase the capacity on two oh five, there's just a lot of concern about that. And I don't, I won't get long-winded here about it, but it, it wasn't in the spirit of what we heard at the legislature, which was, well, let's look at tolling as a way of, of improving the freeways. And as we all know, when it came right down to the end of, the end of the legislative session, who came up short again? Just as we did with some other urban reserve issues and land use issues, Clackamas County came up short again. And I'm not here just about Clackamas County, I'm here because two oh five to Clackamas County is our industrial corridor. It, it, over and over, I say, I'm not here crying about being in traffic in my Honda, I wish I weren't. My real concern is about our distribution capability, about increased food costs, a dramatic increase in air pollution, safety issues. People get frustrated when they're sitting in traffic and they do stupid things, not dumb things, stupid things. And so, all intertwined with the, with the lack of attention to our roads, is the feeling with myself and almost everyone I talk to, that we're going to pay more, the money's going to go into a magic box, and our biggest problem won't be addressed. So let's stay after that, let's send a firm message to ODOT and to Metro that we've got to have the capacity increased at Stafford. Thank you for your, for your work on that in the past. And I'll conclude, I have ten seconds left, it's going to take me thirty. I appreciate the gestures and the, and the county responding to an inquiry about having evening meetings. We're getting closer. Before it was announced that we'd have one evening meeting every quarter, I started gathering signatures for two evening meetings a month, assuming that in the end, we'd get one, and that's the goal. That's what was taken away, that's what we'd like to see returned. I've only got a hundred and twenty-one signatures, but I need to know how many I need to make that happen.
Twelve thousand eight hundred and forty-three, I'm just kidding.
Okay. And that, that, of course, that would be a constitutional amendment rather than a statutory. But again, that's, that's just something that I think is so critical, it's just critical that we have the ability to, especially the working folks or people with their kids, to be able to come to a set evening meeting once a month. And I will continue to pursue that on behalf of the citizens. Thank you for the three minutes and fifty-five seconds.
I was going to add that, Don wants to say something, but-
I was just going to say that we do have an evening meeting scheduled for May the tenth, May the tenth.
Thank you.
Thankfully, we have Paul down there listening to folks communicate their concerns about tolling. One of the reasons that they could toll before the capacity is built to raise the money to build the capacity, but I think we've all loudly said that, you know, we're, folks might be willing to pay for more capacity, but we need more capacity. Right now, we're underserved with two lanes in each direction. Three lanes should be the standard, and if we want to pay tolls, let's pay for that fourth lane. And you're right, it, I'm very concerned that when you get on two oh five, just about any time now, there's a traffic jam. And that's, Paul's mentioned over the years, having been in the auto industry, that sitting in, parked on a freeway burns a lot of gas and is, causes pollution. And I, I'm hopeful that, because the federal government funded more money in tiger grants, that when we go back to Washington DC, or when I go in the next couple of weeks, I'm hoping that our representatives there will support a tiger grant to actually build those lanes. And they did last time, and the legislature didn't step up, so maybe the money that will come, the larger tiger grants might be enough to stimulate the legislature to actually take steps to resolve the problem. But we have a lot of concerns about tolling. Anybody else?
I'll just add that maybe we should get Les a copy of the letter we sent to ODOT, and copied other agencies on regard to our position on tolling, which kind of speaks to what Chair Bernard just shared.
I also wanted to mention that we just got done with a Clackamas County survey, and the top on the list was transportation and congestion. So that's, that's different, I mean, it's moved way up the list. It used to be public safety was number one, now it is, people are tired of sitting on the freeway, trying to get to work, get to their, take their kids to school, or everything else, so we're, I think Paul's been representing us well there.
Great, I appreciate the response, and it's always fun to be ahead of the curve, isn't it? You talk like I have for three, four years, and Paul, and others, and eventually it comes to fruition, and then people think you, you figured something out, or that, you know, you've, you've got some special ability. It doesn't take special ability to pay attention to some of the, of the basic issues out there. And when we're all sitting in traffic, you don't need to be a planner to understand that that's not working. So thank you again.
All right, thank you. John Michaels. Morning.
John Michaels from West Lynn, not on the board of Oregon Wild. I'm just a small business owner here in the county, family's been here about a hundred and fifty years, used to have logging companies, too, so it's kind of why I'm here. Would you mind if I asked you some questions? Mr. Bernard, you previously discussed withdrawing from the OACC. When did you discuss this with the other members? Do you remember roughly when that was?
Was it a month ago, I'm guessing?
Oh, so this is recently, then?
Fairly recently. Actually, every year I talk about it. Last couple of years I've been talking about it.
Last couple of years, okay.
Because the dues are pretty high, and, and whether we're getting a benefit is that question.
Okay, yeah, right, that definitely was, so it's been for a couple of years, okay. And when was this membership fee sent to the A O E C C, the last one?
When was the what?
When were the dues paid?
Pardon me?
It seems to me it was beginning of the year. No, it was fairly recent.
So they were billed in June of two thousand and seventeen, would have been paid shortly thereafter.
That's a two-year.
Oh, it's a two-year, so next will be twenty nineteen, sounds like. Okay, so, June. Okay. So, Ms. Schrader kind of gave a little bit of information that I didn't know about, about what the purpose of the membership was, having a seat on the board to help have a voice in the process, okay? Is there any other purpose for the membership besides having a seat at the table?
Well, I would say, you know, Commissioner Schrader's going to be the president, or chair, what do they call it?
I'll be the president of the association.
Of Oregon counties, and it's-
It's different than the O N C counties.
But what's important is that it's, as a leader, we don't want to, you know, upset everybody else. I mean, I don't necessarily mind doing that, but-
Okay.
But she's going to be there in a leadership role.
And I'm trying to influence policy in a positive way with this folk, but you have to look at it as well with the lens of diversity, because we really are dealing with a rural urban divide here, and how people view use of forest land, natural resources, and so on and so forth. And my style is more, how do we kind of come to consensus and agreement? For example, the A O C counties has, we have a group called County Solutions, which is modeled on the Governor's Office of Regional Solutions, where when you have these kinds of thorny issues where you're trying to reach an agreement, you get a neutral party together to help facilitate that discussion. It's been very successful, it was started by John Kitzhaber, it is now a part of the Governor's Cabinet and counties. We have actually started doing it among ourselves, and we can bring all the agencies in from the Governor's Office to help discuss these issues. And if we don't have a place at any of these tables, we won't be able to influence that. And from my perspective, and I'm really going to apologize to my, my colleagues, I know I'm probably, yes, sorry, Jim, Jim's giving me the eye right now.
He sounded very passionate about your role.
Well, it's, 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 it's just that I understand, you know, when you understand the pressures they're going through, you understand their poverty issues, when you understand they have a much more utilitarian view of how we manage resources, but I can't influence and move to another paradigm if I don't, if I'm not there. And I, I will say, I really feel strongly that, this is the first time in a long time someone from this neck of the woods has been in a position of any kind of influence. And one of the legacies I would like to leave is further discussions about these divides, how do we move forward as counties plural thirty-six. But they are quite different, it's quite diverse. When you talk about inclusivity and diversity, you can make the same assertion with what we deal with, with, you know, the different counties, the different sizes. We're a four-hundred-thousand, you know, urban county. We have a, we have a workforce system, we have an economic system, not based only on timber. We have some of the smaller counties, you know, maybe populations maybe of twelve-hundred, who are struggling to try and figure out how they can have an economy other than timber harvest. They don't want to not be able to harvest timber, but they would like some certainty from their, this is their perspective, so they would at least know what, what they could have for their roads, their schools, and things of that sort. So those are, these are thorny problems, and I, I'm feeling, I get, I get worried because I don't think, I probably haven't communicated well to Multnomah County and Clatsop. There's a, there's a broader picture here, that we need to be in this together if we're going to solve it. So it's, it's not because I'm anti, obviously, I'm a biologist, I was a pollination ecologist, for goodness. I told people bees were important years ago, and nobody was listening, but anyway.
Glad you like bees, me, too.
Yeah.
So, John, you have forty seconds. Let's finish up, and then Paul and Ken would like to-
I took his time.
Could I have just a few more seconds than forty, sir?
Yes, I think, it's okay, Les.
You'll be all right. Thank you. I'll make, I'll make this really brief, because I just want to ask a couple more questions. So we, so you talked a little about the cost-benefit analysis for the county residents using these tax dollars. Did you come up with a, kind of an answer for what, what the benefit is as far as the twenty-seven thousand a year?
I, I would say the benefit is that, at least we are at the table, have some influence.
At the table, then, so, okay.
But, you know, the cost analysis of that, I, that's a discussion we're going to have next time the dues are due.
Very good, thank you, sir. And how many years has Clackamas County been part of the O A C C?
Probably since the day it was created. Does anybody know how long?
I, I was here from two thousand, since I've been here, two thousand and three.
It's probably been more like fifty years.
I think it's been since it was, you know, and sea lands were created, because-
You know when that was, by chance?
No, I'd have to find it out.
So if it was twenty years, that'd be half a million dollars, basically, if it was forty years, we had a million.
Well, the dues have changed. We used to actually get money, revenue.
From the-
Forests.
And, and that used to be somewhere around five million, if I remember.
And we still get-
It's high as sixteen.
It's high as sixteen million, now it's lucky of sixteen bucks.
Okay.
Well, we do get, we could, I'll have, I'll have staff check that out, what the revenue is exactly from that. We do, we get a few million, if I recall.
Yeah, well, I don't think so.
You get a little bit, okay.
But anyway, we'll find out.
And I, I don't know if I can ask this, I'm just going to ask anyway, but I kind of think that Ms. Schrader is against withdrawing, but if I may ask the other members, which ones are for withdrawing?
Well, I don't know that we'll do that, but, I mean, you're welcome to.
Yeah, I was just going to ask, yeah. It's probably inappropriate, but I thought I'd ask anyway.
But-
It's time for some, I have some comments to make.
Paul would be there. If you're done with your comments, you may get that answer in the responses that we hear. But that's up to them.
I just had one last thing to, just to say, is that, well, Multnomah County has exited the A O C C, maybe primarily as a statement, which is very powerful, maybe more powerful than being on this particular organization, so I just would ask you to consider that power as opposed to me being on, on the part of that organization, which is not really helping our climate change problems.
All right, appreciate it. Thank you for coming today.
Thank you for listening, I appreciate your time.
All right.
Thank you.
Wait. All right, Paul, you were up.
All of us, ladies and gentlemen, um-
Okay.
I-
I, just from listening to this, my concern is that a lot of people out there that are either in the audience, or especially watching at home, are probably confused, because the acronyms being thrown around are mixing up two different organizations. And I always get really nervous when that kind of thing happens. So, our role with the AOC, Association of Oregon Counties, Association of Oregon Counties, does things from energy, economic development, climate change, as it affects that, roads, transportation, health, human services, mental health, a whole array of things. And they do a lot of good things. And I think it's important, we don't, the acronyms are being messed up, and it's not, there's not a lumber focus, frankly, of the AOC. It's almost everything we do, and we coordinate and work with Multnomah County on a number of things, other counties, and our veterans affair. I mean, there's numerous committees, I can't... My focus has been there on transportation, economic development. That's what I pretty well participate in. And I would say it's been very helpful trying to get a statewide position on transportation needs, farming, land use, I mean, there's governance, there is a vast array of work we do. So, I'm hoping maybe that a dialogue that you're having is something maybe that you have, call us up and set up a meeting with some of these commissioners that are involved on that timber side of the equation, and get those questions answered, because I think it's really important we don't confuse our constituency out there that we're a member of an organization that's actually doing a lot of good, and the dues we pay to AOC, I think, are valuable because of all these different things we do, whether it's healthcare, all the important things, whether it's the homeless, there are substantial number of things that are not related to timber that we're involved with. So, I am a supporter of the AOC, the Association of Oregon Counties, for the vast array of work that we do, and primarily, for me, that has been in the means of economic development, transportation, and jobs, and to some degree, the homeless and the veterans as well.
And I guess I would add that, we don't always agree, but we're not going to stop our membership because we don't agree with one issue, and that's one of the challenges. But Ken?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to speak to the overarching concept here, because I think it's important. I serve on the Public Safety Committee, and one of the things that I noticed this year as a new member of this board and attending the County College, was that no one from Multnomah County who had been recently elected attended County College. When I was at a public safety meeting of the Public Safety Subcommittee of AOC, there were two critical issues for women's safety. One was a strangulation bill, and the other one was a rape kit bill. There was no one at the table from Multnomah County. I don't believe that that helps anybody when you're not at the table. Everybody has to be at the table to have these discussions. Had I not been at the table, because we're talking about an organization that has a significant number of members from conservative counties, the issue of strangulation and the issue of rape kit processing would not have been supported by the AOC. They were going to be neutral. By being at the table, they were not neutral. They took a position in favor of those bills and wrote a letter in support particularly of the strangulation bill. So, being at the table is a crucial aspect of this. When I was running for this office, during that year, Metro was passing out $4 million worth of grant money to the counties. In Clackamas County, because of the poor relationship that existed between us and Metro, got no money that year. This year, almost every grant, if not every grant, that we requested of Metro was funded. And because of the positive relationships we have now built with Metro, a longstanding issue of land use in Stafford was resolved in five months, with 31 elected officials signing on to an agreement to, so that when the long-term growth occurs in that region, that the community will have a voice in what is done, and how it's done, and the three surrounding cities who will be the most impacted will have a voice in that process. All of that occurred by having good, redeveloping good, positive, working relationships and being at the table. So, I will answer your question directly, sir. I support Commissioner Schrader in her request at this time. I think it's crucial that we are at the table. I will also point out, we don't support the lawsuit, and we've made that clear. But not being at the table is not a solution to the problem. As the old saying goes, if you're not at the table, you're on the menu. So, and I don't expect we'll win every issue, we don't, quite frankly, but if we're not there, we don't win any issue. So, that's why I'm supporting Commissioner Schrader's request, that at this point in time, she be allowed the opportunity, especially with the new position she's going to have, to try and influence on some of these kinds of issues that I know are critical to all of us when it comes to the environment. So, that's where I'm coming from. You're welcome, sir.
All right. We'll move on to the consent agenda.
Okay, today's consent agenda. Under Health, Housing, and Human Services, approval of an intergovernmental grant agreement, 157026, with the state of Oregon acting by and through its Oregon Health Authority for the 2018 Farm Direct Nutrition Program. Approval of contract with Tri-County Metropolitan Transportation District of Oregon, TRIMET, for the monthly Hop Pass Program for electronic fair instrument services to Clackamas County Social Services and Residents. Approval of a revenue agreement with Health Share of Oregon for behavioral health services to members enrolled in the Oregon Health Plan. Approval of a revenue agreement with Care Oregon for dental health expansion. Under the Department of Transportation and Development, approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County and TRIMET for maintenance of the Portland-Milwaukee Light Rail Project facilities. Also, a board order approving solid waste management fee adjustments. Under elected officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes. And approval of a contract amendment number seven with the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office and DePaul Industries for security screening personnel for the Clackamas County Court System. Under Business and Community Services, approval of a purchase and sell agreement with Stone Land and Timber for the sale of real property. Under North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District, approval of a temporary construction easement from North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District to Clackamas County Service District Number Five. Under the Development Agency, approval of a utility easement provided to Portland General Electric. And under Service District Number Five, which is street lighting, acceptance of a temporary construction easement from the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District related to McLaughlin Boulevard Street Lighting Project. And that concludes today's consent agenda.
Thank you, Mary. Ken?
Yes, you're ready to accept a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Yes, we move second to approve the consent agenda. Does any member of the commission wish to... Any item? Seeing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the county administrator update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've got just a couple of items to share with you. One, I'm happy to relay to you that the second phase of the McLaughlin Boulevard Street Lighting Project is officially underway, so we'll shine a little light on things. In the coming weeks, the lights will be installed along the east side of McLaughlin Boulevard, and it's largely thanks to the dedicated work of our many county partners to make this happen, and that includes the McLaughlin Area Planning Implementation Team, or MAPIT, the McLaughlin Area Business Alliance, the Oregon Department of Transportation, as well as Portland General Electric. There were streetlights installed on the west side of McLaughlin Boulevard last year, and so this then complements that on the east side. Our many thanks to the work that our staff of the Clackamas County Service District Number Five, that's our street lighting utility service district, I want to extend our thanks to them, and the project is expected to wrap up in September. Earlier this week, our Clackamas County Water and Environment Services Department worked with partners to announce the expansion of a backyard habitat certification program. This is a program that helps to provide homeowners and organizations who manage less than one acre of property, how to go about improving those smaller properties to support wildlife. Over 4,500 yards throughout the region, that's 4,500 yards under one acre in size, are already enrolled in the program, and the program's expanded into Damascus, Gladstone, Happy Valley, Oregon City, River Grove, and Wilsonville. And I just wanted to extend a thank you to our staff in Wes, and our partners, the Soil and Water Conservation District, the Columbia Land Trust, and the Audubon Society of Portland. So, thanks very much.
Thank you, sir. Let me see, I lost order here. First up is Ken.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, it has been a bit of a busy week. We attended the Children's Center Program on Overcoming ACES, or Adverse Childhood Experiences, which was quite educational. Had a fair board meeting, where we continue to work on our fair board agreement. I think we'll probably just get the attorneys in the room and push them into a closet and say they can't come out until we have an agreement.
Sure.
Yeah. So, hopefully, we'll get this finally resolved. Had the privilege of attending our ham radio operators program this week. Once or twice a year, they go to a county park, and they set up all of their equipment and practice, preparing for emergencies where all of the communication systems in the county could go down, say, in a subduction zone event, where we would lose all local communications, and they're going to be the last line of defense in terms of communication. And the current leader of that particular group is now the state leader of that group, and he lives right here in Oregon City. In fact, he's a neighbor of mine and a former Marine, and boy, does he have them squared away, I can tell you that. We went down to the Interfore Plant in Malala to take a look at their facility, their lumber production, how they do it, employees that they have, and what possibilities there are of working with them on the cross-laminated timber project, which is something they had some interest in. I'm now serving on the Broadband Services Committee for AOC. As you know, a law was recently passed by the legislature to look at extending broadband services to more of the government agencies, high-speed internet in partnership with the high-speed internet providers. I'm mostly making sure that our flanks are protected on that, and that the flexibility that we currently enjoy as a county on that issue remains in place. Then we'll see where it goes from there. And last night, had the pleasure, as we all did, of meeting with the new Clackamas County Leadership Academy, the new civilian program. That was really enjoyable, and the method that they used for the roundtable discussions, I thought was outstanding. Some people would call it speed dating, but actually, I think it was very informative both for them and for us. And then, congratulations to the graduates of the new Leadership Academy from last year. Thank you. Oh, the dog. Yes. Here we go.
Aw, Bucky.
Yeah. This is Bucky. He is 10 pounds of sass and attitude rolled into a stocky, solid frame and built like a little bull. Ole. He would love an active home with an owner that has some experience with his bold, outgoing chihuahua nature. He may have a big dog attitude in his little dog body, but he knows how, exactly how to cuddle in a lap. Getting petted and hanging out with people are his favorite things. So, if you're looking for a fearless companion who is ready to try taking over the world, stop by and meet him. We know you'll love him. For more information about Bucky and other adoptable dogs, please contact Clackamas County Dog Services at 503-655-8628, or www.clackamas.us/dogs.
Thank you. Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Commissioner Humberson did a pretty good job saying what our week was, because we shared a lot of those events together. So, thank you for that update. I wanted to just give a little bit of a highlight on an event that I attended that the rest of you did not have the privilege of attending, and it was the Tri-County Opiate Summit, which had representatives from Multnomah County, Washington County, and Clackamas County. And it was really an effort to bring together all of us to get on the same page as to what is the accurate information, what is the crisis, and what can we do collectively to address the issue? And I must say that there, it was excellent. I'm going to have this book in my office for any of you to look at. It has some really good data, just to thumb through, and these were the slide presentations that were presented. But a couple things, in particular, for our particular county, Clackamas County, some of the numbers that I think are important to know, that in 2016, for, we now have, we had 401,000 residents that year. Actually, this was 2015 data. In that year, there were 417,000 opiate prescriptions. So, that, those numbers alone tell you that there are more opiate prescriptions in Clackamas County than there are residents. And the reason for that, as we all, as a board, are aware of, is that there was inaccurate information given to prescribers for years, that led to the seriousness of the opiate crisis, where doctors were not informed that these drugs were highly, highly addictive. It has led to many people going from opiates to heroin. There are serious issues with overdoses. We now have efforts through naloxone to Narcan to stop addictions. We have Narcan that our first responders have to, and it's been working. We've been able to save a lot of lives, and that is a tri-county effort to save lives and to stop the serious issues. Couple things I just wanted to share, which really tugged at my heart while I was during, at this opiate summit. There was a young man who presented, his name is Nico. He was asked to present from our folks, our Clackamas County Sheriff, and he just shared a story of how his drug addiction progressed so severely and ended up in the criminal justice system. And the one sentence that he said that I just went, wow, this is, this is really something, is when he said he just got to the point that he just didn't care if he lived or died, he just needed the drug. And that really highlights and encapsulates how critically different this addiction is than others. It really, people can seriously risk losing their lives. So, there is an effort of all of us across the region to work collectively. And I just want to say one little quote, if I can find it real quick, that came from Sheriff Reese in Multnomah County, who said that "We must practice relentless compassion with dignity and respect, that we will hold you up and pick you up." I don't know if that's a direct quote, because those were just my notes, I just highlighted things that different presenters said, but I was moved by the way that we, as a region, are moving in our thinking about that we are not blaming individuals as much as we are recognizing that this is an illness, this is a health issue, this can be responsive to interventions, and we can help people, but we've got to fix our systems. And I think collectively, as a region, through our advocacy with the legislature and our advocacy federally, we have no other choice but to intervene and directly impact this crisis.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Schrader?
Yeah, it's been a real busy week. I want to really mention the ACE event. That was one of the best panels I think I've ever heard, with experts dealing with children who have had adverse childhood experiences and how it affects them, and, you know, how we can help build resiliency in those kids that have been abused. And it was the Children's Center that sponsored it. I believe it's going to be on Talk Out Loud, OPB?
Think Out Loud.
Think Out Loud, from Oregon, thank you. Oregon puts Talk Out Loud, Think Out Loud. Well, I talk out loud, so, as you all know, so, there you go. But it's actually going to be rebroadcast on that, and I think it's well worth, people can find out. I don't, I haven't been able to find out when it's actually going to air, but it's well worth listening to. And thanks to the Children's Center. And thanks to the Children's Center for pulling that together. They're our center that really deals with children who have been victims of abuse and need to get medical assessments in order to move them forward through a system and get them out of bad situations. I also had a great lunch meeting with Charlotte Christensen, and she is the Vice President of the Oregon-China Sister State Relations Council. And I think, Ken, you know her too, because we work on China stuff together. And they recently invited me to do a training in Fujian Province in May. And also, they're pulling together in November, opportunities for a trade mission that I'm hopeful that my fellow commissioners will have an opportunity to visit. It's going to be, I think, visiting in particular, our sister county, Guanyun County. And we are really, kind of, again, I always joke, I feel like Nixon. I opened up, we opened up China for Clackamas County. But indeed, China is one of our largest trade partners, and we export millions of dollars of fresh fruits and vegetables to that area. And as we work through a strategy with our economic development team on a trade strategy, we will be including, looking at other countries to help our businesses get trained up if they want to be exporting their goods and services to South America, to, you know, to Europe, so on and so forth. So, that's been kind of a really fun thing. I also had lunch with the new Executive Director of the PNDC, Sarah Garrison, and that is a manufacturing group that we incubated here in the county. And she's going to bring them up to new levels, I think, of achievement as a group of businesses who are manufacturers. Everybody knows our dear friend Larry Mosley had a chance to have a cup of coffee with him the other day. He is a hero when it comes to veterans and is himself a Vietnam veteran. And he is just a lovely man, wonderful person, and I'm so glad he's on our side for veterans' advocacy. We also met, I think that Commissioner Fisher and I met with Mayor Mark Gamba. We talked about some of the parks' needs, that I'm hopeful we can partner with our North Clackamas Park and Rec. Discnet to see what we can do to help them finish up their riverside park there. I think we're all on board. We're going to have to check the financials and see what we can do to help them finish that great project. And also, let me just say something about the Association of Oregon Counties, what we have pulled together in our Housing Subcommittee, which I had chaired, and now I'm second Vice President, so I'm actually first Vice President, so I did give that to my dear friend, Anne Schuster. But we did meet with Margaret Salazar and with the League of Oregon Cities and the Association of Oregon Counties. We are actually getting a pot of money to start doing outreach throughout the counties, throughout the state, about what their housing needs are, because we're finding the housing pieces, not just here, the crisis we're facing, it's statewide. And then, we're actually going to work to get those counties technical assistance based on their needs, of what they need to do to house their populations, because they are also in crisis with that as well. So that's one of the good things. And thank you, Commissioner Savas, for making the clarity between the two organizations. They are two separate organizations, and indeed, the Association of Oregon Counties, like the League of Oregon Cities, works on many different issues, not just natural resource issues. So, okay. Oh, the word of the week. Capricious. Characterized by a whimsical attitude, did you know, a person who acts impulsively or unpredictably can be said to be capricious? Given the librarian chose not to be capricious in the running of the library, it is not a surprise how well the library operates. And finally, arts and culture in the county. Okay. Creative arts at Rosevilla, you should come up on the screen at some point, presents Hillary Pfeiffer. Hillary Pfeiffer is a practicing public production and conceptual artist of nearly three decades. Her craft influenced sculpture and installations humorously address the conflict between humans and the natural environment through the lens of curiosity. Join CARV for an afternoon discussion with Hillary, who will share her experiences navigating the public art realm and her fascination with nature's ability to adapt or reassert itself in response to human activity. Saturday, April 21st, 1:30 to 2:30, Performing Arts at Rosevilla. The North Clackamas Arts Guild 2050 Anniversary Art Show. The North Clackamas Arts Guild is celebrating its 2050 anniversary. It'll have an art show and sale. There will be incredible art by guild members, hors d'oeuvres, live music by Hamid Shabita Bennett, and more. Viewing is free to the public. Art will be for sale, and proceed to support your local artists. Be a small presentation at 7:00 PM, including a brief history of the guild by their historian. It's in Mayor Gamba's neck of the woods. The Moonlight Coffee House, Saturday, April 21st, 5:00 to 8:00, in Milwaukee. And lastly, I'm going to read something from Lakewood for the Arts here. We don't have it on the screen. But Sister Act is coming. And here is the synopsis. Dolores Van Cartier is a wannabe diva, whose life takes a surprising turn when she witnesses a crime, and the cops hide her in the last place and nothing to look, a convent. Under the suspicious watch of Mother Superior, Dolores helps her fellow sisters find their voices as she unexpectedly rediscovers her own. A sparkling tribute to the universal power of friendship. Sister Act is Reason to Rejoice is going to be coming to primetime, actually, on April 27th. So, that's the arts news.
Great.
There we go. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Savas.
Yes, well, first of all, I just want to just acknowledge Commissioner Schrader, I think, trying to, did a good job today, tried to navigate the rationale of this forest lands thing to some degree, and I'm making the argument of being at the table, how important that is. I do know that from time to time, when I'm at the AOC and we hear about some of these timber issues, I realize that it's very complex. And I haven't put in the work to opine on it with any kind of level of understanding, because I haven't really delved in there. And I know that Commissioner Bernard, or Chair Bernard, but Commissioner Bernard then, Commissioner Schrader, and now Commissioner Humberston are getting involved in that world. And you were quite involved yourself. So you have a greater understanding, more so than I do, so I rely upon that. But I just want to say that it's, these issues are complex. Transportation's complex, everything just seems to be, nothing is, nothing's black and white. There's nothing that's black and white. And I know that people wanted to still that down to yes or no, or support or not support, and I wish things were really that simple, but they're not. So, Mary's going to put on the screen here, I believe, the remaining open houses. Last week, I mentioned there were five open houses. Now, there's two left that you can participate on, in. And this is about the tolling issue in the region. There's two more left. One is Saturday, April 21st, between 9:30 AM and 12:30 PM in the afternoon, at the NBC Suites Airport, in the Pine Room. I encourage people to go there. Wednesday night, Thursday night, Thursday night was the first one. And we, there was reasonable attendance, but as I was trying to stress then, there is substantially more attendance in Multnomah County and in Clark County at these meetings than there are in Washington and Clackamas. So, we need to get our voice spoken. We're the only part of I-205 being studied, 12, 13 miles, in which there are no alternatives other than driving a car. If you're at the Town Center and you want to go to Wilsonville, or you're at the Wilsonville and want to go to Town Center, there is no alternative. There's no bus service, there's no bike service, bike lanes, there's no sidewalks that will get you from point A to point B. So, we are literally trapped. We're in a unique situation, I want to point that out. We heard last night from a number of people at our leadership meeting, you know, their input on that, which has been very similar to what we're hearing at these others. And also, there'll be another meeting in Vancouver on Monday, April 30th. You can also go online. And online, there's ODOT's website, there's an opportunity to participate in the online poll, and there's a complicated address on there. You want to reach out to us, we can get you that link. But if you go to ODOT's website, there it is on the screen right now. If you go online, ODOT, you can navigate yourself to that. Just put in congestion pricing on the search bar, and it should get you where you need to go. And that's really what I have. I do want to just echo, it has been a busy week. I really was really impressed and blown away with the ACE Event, both in the morning or in the afternoon and that evening. And having honored, I forgot the doctor's name, but she did a great job as the speaker that evening. But what a great progress on really understanding the challenges that abused children have gone through and the traumatic experiences, some of which are unspeakable. But helping to better understand how to help these folks is huge. And I just want to just acknowledge the great work that they're doing. And that's what I have for today.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Bernard? Oh, that's me. So, probably five, six years ago, I was elected to the Forest Trust Land Committee. And one of the reasons was because I was a urban guy, and I actually became the Vice Chair. And the rural guy, Tim Josie, from Tillamook County, had a lot of forest land. I was actually kicked off, voted out after a while, because I was the city guy. And now, I'm back on. And in the last election, Washington County supported myself being back on that committee. We had our first meeting the other day, and it was very informative, but we have a long way to go. The one issue that is always challenging me, and I've lived by this rule, is a contract's a contract. And if we have a contract with Forest Trust Lands or with ONC, it should be followed unless it's changed. Light rail was a very challenging issue, but a contract's a contract. So we need to fix the contract, amend the contract, or resolve the issues. Being at the table is important, and that's why they kicked me off of Forest Trust Land, I guess. And hopefully, we'll be able to provide some influence, but we're still going to talk about whether we pay the dues next time. On the ballot are a couple important issues. Gladstone Library Support, $200,000, so we can build a library in Gladstone. It's very important at this pass. It's not a tax increase, it comes out of the general fund, and it's very important. Also, Commissioner Fisher's on the ballot. She has no opponent. And Commissioner Savas is on the ballot. And I'll tell you, I've worked with Paul a long time. We do have a very good commission right now. You know, I'm not going to go as far as to say that I endorse you, but I look forward to working with you another four years. So, be sure and vote, support the library, and the commission is working well together. I've heard Paul even say it. This is one of the best commissions we've had since we went to five. And I think we all have to agree that that's true. We did have the meeting last night, which is the Clacko Academy. Huge attendance, 75 people signed up, and we divided up. It was great. And we each got 15 minutes, which just flew by. And I'd love to have a fly on the wall in every one of your meetings to hear what you said. But every time I went in, Commissioner Fisher made some comment about me. I just...
Right.
Yeah. So I'm not sure how that went. But it was very good. And one of the things that, in the other, which is our leadership program, we learned is that so few youth know anything about Clackamas County. They probably don't even know they live in Clackamas County. And there were a lot of youth that, who came to that leadership program, which was very exciting. And then, Commissioner Fisher and I talked about, maybe someday, and I got some information from the mayor of Milwaukee about a program that is, that's not it, a youth budget, which you actually create a budget. In one state, it's a million, in one community, it's a million dollars that kids actually budget. And we, of course, won't go that high. But it'd be, next year, Commissioner Fisher's going to work on maybe creating a budget for youth. One of the things they learned is that you'd think, well, I'm going to build a skate park. None of the money went to building a skate park. Their issue was, well, you have to educate them that there was feed hungry homelessness, create job opportunities, the many things we think about are so important. And that's what they ended up doing. That's what they do, and it's a kind of a national trend. And we would do maybe something similar here, in that we, the five of us would be in there, and five youth could be on there. So, I mean, it's a great idea. Talk about a great way to get youth involvement, that would definitely do it. So that, and anyway, that group, the Leadership Academy, had five programs that they evaluated and looked at. And I was, it was, they were all wonderful ideas and things we should do right now. And most of them aren't expensive, but they are things that we should do. One was that Mary Jo Cardesany was involved in, was a single operator, might be multiple people. But we still have a number that's in the phone book, that when you call it, it says, push this thing, and it just cycles back. And there are places where the phone number's wrong. And, but it's also really hard to keep up. I don't know if we pay a phone directory charge, but that might be something we want to look at. I know that as a business owner, the phone book was a very expensive way to advertise. And I don't know if we're doing that now. And then, the sheriff has hosted the Child Abuse and Family Violence Summit for a number of years now. And he is, I believe they're doing it now, and I have an opportunity to introduce one of the speakers tomorrow. And we often attend that. I mean, this is a critical job that our sheriff's officers, police officers, provide, making sure that we protect children and families from violence. And it's also a very tough job. I don't think, we talk about elected officials having thick skin, I don't think I could do the job they're doing. And so, we got, we want to thank them first for the hard work they do, and make sure that they take care of themselves, and that they, when they're in a crisis, which I'm sure they, all of them experienced, that they get the service they need to make sure they remain healthy. And that's a lot about what this summit's about, making sure that you're healthy. Great speakers, the Family Justice Center, that's right over there, actually came from that. And thanks to the sheriff and Clackamas Women's Services and all the partners that now exist in there, we're making a difference. I don't know where these people went before, when they were abused. They went to the courts and had to walk in front of their violator. But we're really making a difference. And our goal, of course, is to end domestic violence, which probably will never happen, but we can end the deaths that occur in those relationships. And that is our goal, that Clackamas County will have no deaths in case of domestic violence. And I think, last year, we were successful, or there might have been one. We've come a long ways. And the business over there is growing, which is sad, but at least there's a place to go. And so, I'm very proud of that. And what else? The leadership program, I'll just tell you, one, and the programs were core values, how to incorporate that in the culture. Youth engagement, that's where, you know, the idea of a youth council or budget committee kind of came from. Dog licensing. I have two dogs. I'm not even sure how to license them. I'm really not. We need to communicate better. Centralized phone line and career development. You know, we have, it's a lot of people retiring. We have a lot of needs, and we want to make sure that we provide an opportunity for our employees to grow. employees to grow in what they're doing, in that department or other departments. We provide opportunities for students to come and work at the county during the summer. A lot of those people end up becoming employees here. There's no better way than a program like that to see if that person's the right person to come to work for Clackamas County. And monthly, we do a celebration of every five years, somebody's here, and I'll tell you, I am always totally amazed of the work that people do here at the county, how much they care, and the length of time they've been here. A joke, couldn't they find another job at 25, 30 years? It's amazing. Mary, how long have you been here? 28 years. And you've come a long way, and we're happy to have you here, and a fine example of, you know, the quality of people that we have at Clackamas County is sitting right there. And so, thank you very much. And we don't have a camera on the crowd, even though there's only two people. I think cardboard cutouts would be appropriate in this case. And with that, we're adjourned. Thank you.